Remember the other day?
Oh, yeah. That was good. If Brother Eric Graham would lead us in the pledge, in prayer this morning, and if Commissioner McCann would lead us in the pledge, please rise.
Father, we're so thankful for your goodness towards us and so love the world that he gave his only begotten son, that whosoever believes in him will not perish but have everlasting life. Father, we thank you so much for your love towards us and for an opportunity to have a relationship.
And to the Republic of which stands one. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Before we get started, I want to welcome Commissioner Thomas back to the court. We appreciate him helping us out for the unexpired term of our great friend Ken Hayes. And I know he'll do a good job trying to, or he'll do a good job with the expectations that Commissioner Hayes had for his precinct. So Commissioner, we appreciate you coming back today.
Thank you, Judge. I'm honored to be here. Thank you.
We do have a quorum, so I want to call this meeting of Commissioners Court to order. First item on our agenda, consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioners Court on December 4th, 2018.
Hearing none, Judge, I move that we approve the minutes of the Commissioners Court regular session for December the 4th as presented. Thank you, Judge.
Motion by Commissioner Geisler, second by Commissioner McCann to approve the minutes of December 4th, 2018 as presented. All those in favor? One of extension?
Yes.
Item two, consider and take action on sheriffs and constable fees for 2019. Sheriff, if you would, please come forward.
Good morning, Court.
Good morning.
These are the fees that we talked about during the budget workshop, and I'm asking the Court to consider these fees to be set and go into effect January 1, 2019.
Are there questions for the sheriff about these fees?
These are pretty similar to what, when I was on. Aren't they pretty close to where they were?
They're pretty close. The only ones that I've requested to go upon would be the RITs, and that's where all, there's a lot of work that goes into the RITs. Everything else is pretty much the same.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Any other questions for the sheriff?
I think it's pertinent to point out that if the public wanted to see our fees in relationship to other counties in the state, there is a website that they can go to now. It's linked into Secretary of State, and it shows all the fees for every county. It's alphabetically listed. You can bring them up county by county. And it shows that we're far from being the most expensive, but they're fair fees as we discussed back in the budget workshop.
Very good. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff. By the way, how's the new evidence building working?
Most of everything moved over here yesterday, and one again this morning. We appreciate that.
Good, a good deal. Glad to hear that.
Appreciate your patience.
Yeah.
No, not that.
Well, you're getting in trouble, man.
See?
Yeah.
He knows there's just a few left. He's getting more fights.
Yeah, he's getting, yeah.
Every court.
Won't be fighting for long.
We may have to have another court after Christmas.
That's right, we may have to. Hearing no other questions, Court will entertain a motion to approve the fees for the sheriffs and constable fees for 2019.
So moved to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Second motion by Commissioner Geisler, second by Commissioner McCann to approve the sheriffs and constable fees for 2019. All those in favor? Item three, consider and take action on an addendum to the fiscal year 2019 indigent defense resource sharing tech program. Letitia, if you would, please come forward and explain this to the Commissioners. How are you doing today?
Good. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to present the addendum to the agreement that was originally signed November 7th, 2017. This just extends the contract date until September of 2019.
And this allows us to collect money for tech type?
This is our attorney will for our indigent defense attorneys, and it helps with my indigent defense grant when I have to run reports.
Okay, okay. Very good.
Just to refresh the Court, when we entered into this, there was a, the grant program that paid 50%.
Yes, sir.
I believe is what it was, our original cost to buy the software for the indigent defense office. And it's continuation of it, better tracks what we have going on, puts it in database format, whereas before we were tracking 750 to a million dollars of expenditures by hand. And this automates the system, allows for reporting, more ample reporting.
Good. Any other questions for Letitia?
No questions, Judge.
No other questions? Thank you, Letitia. No other questions, the Court would entertain a motion to approve the addendum to the fiscal year 2019 indigent defense resource sharing tech share program.
Judge, I'll make that motion and give Judge the authorization to sign it.
I'll second his motion.
Second motion by Commissioner McKinney, second by Commissioner Geisler to approve the addendum to the fiscal year 2019 indigent defense resource sharing program. All those in favor? Item four, consider and take action to reappoint two members to serve on the Henderson County Emergency Service District One Board of Commissioners located in Precinct One. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes, Judge. I walked in the office after being sworn in on Wednesday, last Wednesday, and felt like I hadn't left for two years. I got several questions, people meeting me, and Wendy hit me up on this, that we needed to reappoint two members to the Emergency District One, and they agreed to do this. These are two that have served, and I think they're doing a good job, from what I can tell, after getting quickly initiated back on, at the office. So I think this would be an easy appointment for me to make, and I recommend that we appoint, which would be Woody Glover and I think Don Ellis, to two more years on the ESD Number One.
Very good.
Unless somebody's got any questions on them.
Any questions for Commissioner?
Not any questions, Judge. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the nominations or reappointments, and ESD One being persons of Woody Glover and Don Ellis to stay on the board for the two more years.
Second his motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner McKinney to reappoint Woody Glover and Don Ellis for a two-year term ending December 31st, 2020. All those in favor?
Thank you, Court.
Item five, consider and take action to reappoint three members to the Henderson County Emergency District Number Seven located in Precinct Three. Commissioner McCann?
Yes, this is the members of ESD Number Seven, and the Board has spoke with the members that are there, and they've all agreed to accept a new term, and that is John Morton, Ivory Givens, and Charlotte Slaton. And it is my opinion that we should reinstate them to the Board of Commissioners for ESD Number Seven.
Good, very good. Questions for Commissioner McCann?
Hearing none, Judge, I move that we reappoint John Morton, Ivory Givens, and Charlotte Slaton to the Board of Commissioners for Henderson County ESD Number Seven, two years.
Second his motion.
Second motion by Commissioner McCann, second by Commissioner Geisler to reappoint three Commissioners for another two-year term, being John Morton, Ivory Givens, and Charlotte Slaton. All those in favor? Item six, consider and take action to set a public hearing on a request for posting a 35 mile per hour speed limit on County Road 3814 located in Precinct Three. Commissioner?
Yes, this is a county road that I've had several calls and discussions with some of the property owners and homeowners on that road that would, that request to have a 35 mile an hour speed limit posted on that road, and it has no speed limit posted as of this time. And I would like to set a public hearing on that.
Okay, okay. Today being the 14th of, excuse me, the 11th of December, be the 18th, 25th?
I think the 8th of January would be the next.
Be the next one, okay. Okay. So you want to set for the 8th?
If there's no questions, I'd like to move to set a public hearing on January 8th at 9:20 for setting a 35 mile an hour speed limit on County Road 3814.
Second his motion.
Second motion by Commissioner McCann, second by Commissioner Geisler to set a public hearing at 9:20 on January the 8th, 2019 for a 35 mile an hour speed limit on County Road 3814. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Item seven, consider and take action to reappoint members to the Henderson County Regional Fair Park Board of Directors for a two-year term ending December 31st, 2020.
Yes, Judge, we have four members of the Henderson County Fair Park that their terms are expiring December 31st of this year. Brian Childress representing Precinct Two, Charlotte Farrell representing Precinct Three, Lee Tackett and Charles Elliott representing Precinct Four have all agreed to serve another two-year term on the Henderson County Regional Fair Park Board of Directors. This term would end December 31st, 2020. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Commissioner?
Hearing none, Judge, I move that we reappoint for a two-year term ending December 31st, 2020 Brian Childress, Charlotte Farrell, Lee Tackett, and Charles Elliott.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Geisler, second by Commissioner McCann to reappoint four members to the Fair Park, Regional Fair Park Board, being Brian Childress, Charlotte Farrell, Lee Tackett, and Charles Elliott for two-year terms ending December 31st, 2020. All those in favor? Item eight, consider and take action to allow County Judge to purchase, purchase his iPad Air 16GB and iPhone 6s 32GB for an amount set by the Commissioners Court. My iPad is pretty old now, and it's not working that well, and my iPhone is, I think, kind of out of date, so I just thought it'd be, I didn't think anybody else would want them, so instead of them going to the garbage heap or whatever, I'd like to purchase them if y'all would give me a fair price on them.
Well, that's debatable on that price thing.
That's what I was afraid of.
Can we huddle for just a minute?
No, no huddling.
Maybe we should talk with Ann Marie to see what our shortfall is in indigent defense or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, I could make some of that up, yeah, yeah.
Well, here to serve, Judge.
That's right. Of course, you do realize I'm just a poor electric official.
Retiree.
Yeah, retiree, yeah. I don't, I'm not going to be getting much money anymore. Not that I was getting much money anyway.
So you got an iPhone 6, is that what?
Yeah, that's what it is. It's an iPhone 6.
Wow, that's an oldie but a goodie.
Okay. Kathy got a new one, and it's about a third size of hers.
Yes.
Hers is about as big as my, or this iPad here. Mine's about as big as a space bar.
Any comment from Ira Teedrick?
It would be whatever the Court says. I mean, the value of it is based upon what you guys think you're looking at. The iPad, when you're talking about the cost or the value of it, basically, it's going to hit a limit where he can't update anymore. He may already be at the limit where he can't update that away anymore. So it would be a replacement anyway. And the iPhone, of course, it makes calls and texts, you know, email and web or whatever, but it's going to get to that point where they're not going to be able to update it either, so we'd have to replace it probably in the next year and a half or more.
Okay. In the past, we've sold a chair. And we've sold, and we've sold a weapon. I was trying to remember the amount.
What was the chair? I remember the call.
Chair was...
It was based on how many years he'd sat in the chair.
Yeah, I think it was a dollar.
I think it was a dollar a year. A dollar? It was $18, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was $18, and I paid for it.
Didn't you pay for it? Well, following that tradition.
You want to pay for it?
Well, how many times did he let the phone ring in court as he was learning how to use it?
Why should I not know what?
Okay, I'd set the price on the phone at $2.
Have we funded?
Because we should have compensated it at that time, and then we could have given it back to him as a gift.
Yeah, that's right.
Exactly. I think that's appropriate. As good as any.
I agree.
How much for the iPad?
Now that one's going to cost you.
Yeah. I figured that. I have to turn it on, turn it off, turn it on, turn it off, make it work.
Yeah, I follow the same, same line.
Same line, I'll say same price. Yeah, I was going to base it on the amount of times that we Facebooked on that. I think that was twice.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah.
There you go. Rented over $4.
Somebody want to make that motion?
So moved.
Second his motion.
Wow.
And I'll pay for it.
Yeah.
I'll second that one.
Second motion by Commissioner McKinney, second by Commissioner Geisler to allow County Judge to purchase an iPad and iPhone for $4. All those in favor? Thanks, I appreciate that very much.
No, thank you.
Item nine, receive financial reports. Thank you, Nikki. We have financial reports from JP 2 and JP 4, and these will be available after court in the clerk's office if anyone would like to review them. Item 10, consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheet.
We have no payroll, we don't work cash sheet.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Nikki. Item 11, consider and take action on submitted contracts.
No contracts.
No contracts? Thanks, Jen. Item 12, consider and take action on requests for right-of-way permits. Item 13, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments.
I have filed a budget.
A few of those. Okay. No questions, Court, entertain a motion to, to approve the budget amendments as presented.
So moved.
I'll second.
Second motion by Commissioner Geisler, second by Commissioner Thomas to approve the budget amendments as presented. Item 14, consider and take action on payment of bills.
Yes, Judge, this morning I have two sets. The first one is for this week for fiscal year 18, and the amount is $222,186.40.
Mr. Thomas, you have any questions about these bills?
No, I was looking for Holly when I came in. Now, I did have some questions, but it was back and she answered them. Thank you, Judge.
Mr. McKinney?
No, sir.
Mr. McCann?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Geisler?
Actually, I don't have any questions. I just have a comment. I knew you would be upset with me, Judge, if I didn't point out that this being the last time, the last set of bills, that the city of Athens is going to have a water bill.
That's right.
And you have done such a great job in the last 30 days. You got the sprinkler at the courthouse down to $91, so you have my appreciation and thanks for such a good job in getting that under control.
Thank you.
Even though we did have three inches of rain.
I did have a little help, didn't I?
And the Sheriff's Department isn't here, but, you know, they were able to shave off $1,000 off of the jail water bill. It's all the way down to $16,310 for the month of November. Other than that, I have no other questions.
Thank you. No other questions, Court, entertain a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $222,186.40.
So moved.
A second.
Second motion by Commissioner McKinney, second by Commissioner Thomas to pay the bills for this week. All those in favor? Thank you.
Okay, I also have a set this week for 2019. That total is $279,468.87.
Anyone have any questions about the 2019 bills? Commissioner Thomas?
No questions, Judge.
Mr. McKinney?
No, sir.
Mr. McCann?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Geisler?
I had one. The three-year contract with Seda, this is just an extension of the Google Suite continuation. It's, does that mean payment number three or?
For $9700?
Yes.
That's, yes, that's for yearly costs, and we got, it's like $2.02.
And when does this contract expire?
2020, I believe.
No other questions?
Judge, I do have one question.
Okay, Commissioner?
Southern Health Partners, 2019 bill?
With January?
Oh, okay.
Base, the January base fee.
Oh, the base fee. Got you. Okay, thank you.
No other questions, Court, entertain a motion to pay the 2019 bills in the amount of $279,468.87.
So moved.
A second.
Second motion by Commissioner McKinney, second by Commissioner Thomas to pay the 2019 bills. All those in favor? Item 15, consider and take action on submitted plats. Will be plats today. Susan?
No, sir.
Thank you. 2016, Agenda Item Number 16, open and consider bids.
No bids, sir.
Yeah.
Sitting down there.
I forgot how much phone this was. Sitting about...
You know, Judge, before you call to adjourn, we'll have a couple more chances for you to change the agenda, you know, so that there would be a spot on there like in the old days for Commissioners comments.
That's true.
Then the new judge will have to decide if he wants to keep it or not.
That's right. I'd like to consider that.
I think it would be something worth pondering.
Yeah, I'll ponder. Thanks for the hint.
No problem. I mean, he may not allow me to speak as much as you have, so I'm trying to protect myself here.
That's right. There you go. Item 17, consider and take action to adjourn.
Judge.
Oh, wait, excuse me. Commissioner Thomas has one announcement before he adjourns.
And Commissioner Geisler, I appreciate you bringing that up, because I did have a comment.
It's already starting.
From Precinct One, anyway.
I'm going to bring a gavel.
Really quickly, I, again, I'm honored to be here and I'm back on court. Retirement was actually sweet. I can't describe it any other way. And I was sitting in my shorts and t-shirt on last Tuesday, so I had to figure out how to put a tie back on and find my clothes, so it's been, and, of course, I was sworn in on Wednesday, and Ken brought it up, that we, we had a rain event, and I was, I got very nervous. I thought they were talking about six inches of rain, thinking, here we go again. I'm coming back into, so anyway, I do have mixed feelings about Ken, Commissioner Hayes. He was a friend of mine, and it has been tough. I lost a friend. Not only am I coming into an office that was vacant, but it's been a hard move for me. But I appreciate your confidence. I look forward to working with all, each and every one of you, even the new County Judge when he steps in, so I'm looking forward to it. And I'll do the best to represent Ken the next two years, that I feel like I can honor him and represent him as your... that I feel like I can honor him and represent him as your Commissioners. And one other note, I really want to say, and I told you this was it, Malakoff Tigers are regional finals. You know I love high school football. Malakoff Tigers, the regional champions, are going to semifinals, Wade. You never made it there. Semifinals is four teams, guys, four teams in the state of Texas in Class III Division I. They're playing Brock Friday at 4 o'clock in Frisco the Star, which, amazing opportunity for Malakoff kids. And so be thinking about that. I, I'll be there. We may have shut down Precinct One on our, on our end a little early to make the 4 o'clock game. Also, I wanted to tell you that their starter and one of their best players and a great kid is Kyler Daryl Rimple, and that is Ken Hayes' grandson. He's an excellent player, and he's an excellent child, kid, and he loved his pawpaw. So our thoughts and prayers are with the Malakoff team and Kyler, because he's going through a tough time, too. He lost his grandpa, so just wanted to mention that. Be thinking about the Malakoff Tigers, and go Tigers, so thanks.
That's about enough.
That's enough. Sorry, Judge.
That's no problem. Yeah, I know, I know. With that.
Great idea, wasn't it?
Yeah. I think I know which way I'm going to go now. With that, Court would, would need a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
A motion by Commissioner Geisler, and second by Commissioner Thomas to adjourn. All those in favor? We're adjourned.